I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 8th meeting of the City County Planning Board. Before we get started, we learned earlier today of the passing of our former board chair, Mr. Arnold King. As many in this community know, Mr. King served on the planning board starting February of 2000, becoming the chairman in 2003. After 420 public hearings and work sessions without an absence, Mr. King tenured his resignation due to health reasons in April of this year. The city council and county commissioners honored Mr. King with the resolution on Thursday, May the 16th of this year, and the room we're sitting in today was renamed in his honor on June the 13th. His contributions to our city, to the city of Kernersville, and numerous private and public organizations will never be forgotten. To his wife Kimberly, and his family, friends, our thoughts and prayers are with you during this difficult time. I will request that we now observe a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you very much. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13, and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning, and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today would be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all public hearings, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal, period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning requests, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning requests, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site, and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the requests. Before addressing the planning board today, we would need your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the July 11th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion?
We have approval.
Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Mr. Grubbs? All those in favor, sign of "aye." Pose the same sign. That's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Corley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only zoning case on the consent agenda tonight is Item B4, which is F-1587, is a request to rezone property about 3.27 acres from HBS, which is Highway Business Special Use, to HBL, which is a limited use request. It's on the southwest corner of North Main Street and Truliant Church Road. This is High Point's North Main Street, so this is in the very southeastern portion of the county. This request will add two uses to the existing uses allowed, outdoor, display, retail, and church or religious institution neighborhood scale. And this is a photo of the subject property looking toward the northwest along North Main Street, so coming back toward city. The subject property is here in the background. These are existing buildings, and this is Truliant Church Road. The applicant submitted a limited use request because they don't propose any physical changes to the site, and the community wouldn't get any additional benefit from a site plan that doesn't really show any changes. The area plan, the southeast Forsyth County area plan, recommends commercial use or recognizes the commercial uses on this site, and recommends against expanding those uses onto adjacent properties which the applicant does not propose. Staff has recommended approval of this request.
No one has signed up. Is there anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Corley, in the history of this with the planning board, with the various decisions that have been made, is there anything in there that we should be aware of in terms of, I mean, there were two denials and then an approval, what, 15 years ago or so? Anything in the history of that that would impact this case, or was it being used about the same way?
Yeah, it's been used about the same way. There's nothing that I'm aware of that carries back from those years to now. Any concerns or anything about that?
My guess is when those cases came through for review, 2002 and 1994, there were not area plans in place that supported commercial zoning, whereas we have an area plan in place on this one that supports the commercial zoning. I suspect that's why the staff recommendation was for denial on those two cases.
May I ask a question as well? Has there been any issues with this on the part of the town of High Point? They haven't expressed any reservations?
No. High Point has not said that they have any concerns about this request. They did mention to us that it's possible that they might extend their services to here at some point in the future, but they haven't expressed any concerns.
Any other questions? All right. I'll second. Thank you. A motion by Mr. Lamb, a second by Mr. Grubbs. All of them in favor? Pose the same sign. That's unanimous. Thank you.
You?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next item on your agenda is zoning docket W-3415. And this was originally scheduled to be heard at your June meeting, and I'm sure you're aware that once we receive a rezoning request, the planning board has 120 days to turn around a recommendation to the elected body, so we would need a recommendation from you today. Again, this is case W-3415. Petitioner is Mohammed Otham and Ifet Said. The property is .44 acre, located on the west side of Coal Road between Wat Town Street and Sprague Street. And the request is a general use rezoning from RS9 to NO Neighborhood Office. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan map of the entire county. You can see the subject property there in the southeast part of Winston-Salem, in the pink urban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 2. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there, highlighted in yellow. There's currently a single-family home located on it. Again, it's on the west side of Coal Road in between Wat Town Street to the north and Sprague Street to the south. The property is owned RS9, single-family residential, as is the properties across the street and further to the south along Coal Road. It does a but some highway business, general use zoning to the north where we have a restaurant, and over to the west. Aerial photograph showing the development pattern surrounding the site. And these images are taken on site. This is looking into the subject property there from Coal Road. This is looking north on Coal Road. The site is to the left. This is on the north side of the subject property, which is to the left. This is the back of the restaurant I mentioned earlier. Across Coal Road, and looking south on Coal Road, the site is to the right. Coal Road is a minor thoroughfare. It has ample capacity, and it's served with transit and sidewalks. Now, let's look at the area plan map, which gives guidance for development and redevelopment over the long term in this general area. It's kind of hard to see at this scale, but generally residential is yellow, red is commercial, browns are various densities of multifamily, and purple would be industrial. The area plan does not recommend a change for the subject property. It recommends that it remain low-density residential. As I mentioned earlier, it is a budding highway business zoning on two sides. Coal Road is a minor thoroughfare. Staff sees that there may be some potential for some rezoning of this property. And the NO District does have many inherent design limitations, building square footage, parking location, landscaping, et cetera. But again, the area plan does not recommend a change, and this is a general use rezoning request, so we just really had some concerns about going too against the area plan without a site plan. So in summary, the area plan does not recommend a change for the subject property. This block of Coal Road is characterized by single-family homes. Extending general use, non-residential zoning into this area may have negative consequences on these homes. So staff's recommendation is for denial, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Yes.
Did you discuss with the petitioner special use?
Oh, yes, we certainly did, yes.
All right. Thank you. No one has signed up. Is there anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
You need to bring the proponent up. Yeah, we need to hear from the proponent and give him his full 12 minutes.
So you have 12 minutes? Right here, sir. If you would state your name, your address, and zip code for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Kazazam, address is 611 Wat Town Street, zip code 27107.
All right, would you like to tell us about your case, sir?
Nothing much. I just wanted to see, you know, I've lived at that, that was our single-family home, you know, for the past, I think, 10, 15 years we've lived there. It just got hard to live because of the businesses beside it, you know, they stay open late, so it was kind of, we ended up moving, so the only thing I could come up with, we kept up for rent, nothing, had no luck, so we thought about opening a neighborhood daycare there, so that's why we applied for rezoning.
The staff explored special use as an option with you, and I guess just didn't want to go through the expense of a site plan and some...
Well, I told the planning board, you know, last time I did the site plan on another location, I lost a lot of money, so I didn't want to go that route.
Right, right.
So, you know, I just wanted to see, you know, after they approved it, I would, you know, most definitely go with the site plan route, and that's the only zone, that's the only thing we want to put there, you know, so I told, but they said ask for it, and no, and that's what we went with.
Would a scaled Google map suffice as a site plan for this man on this?
Not for a special use rezoning request, because there's specific requirements in the UDO that state it has to be a sealed drawing by either an engineer, surveyor, or landscape architect, so for rezoning purposes, it would not suffice.
Any additional questions for...
I'm a little confused if the intention is a daycare, can't those be done within a residential zoning?
There are residential districts that allow daycares, yes, or multifamily districts.
RM8 is the least intense district that allows a child daycare center, so still necessitating rezoning regardless. And if you do a child daycare center, you would have to do a site plan that would be approved by the planning board, so you would either get the property rezoned through a general use rezoning, you have to bring a site plan back through, or you can do it concurrently and get the site plan approved as part of the rezoning as an S. But it would require a site plan regardless of the zoning.
But you would know, if you already had it rezoned, then you would know you were going to have...
If you went through the scenario that Chris described first, where you split it in two and you got the zoning approved, then yes, you would already have the zoning approval in hand before you paid the money to have the site plan drawn up, if you followed that route.
I understand that you've had a previous site plan done for...
For another location.
Oh, not this one?
That was a separate rezoning request from about two or three years ago.
Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion. I would over and visit the site, and it does seem like, I mean, this is a very residential area, very active homes in that block, and, you know, if zoning changed there, then you've got problems with the neighbor, the next neighbor, and the next neighbor as you go along. So I concur with the planning board's conclusion for denial, so I'd make a motion for denial.
Mr. Chairman, don't forget to close the public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Back to your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in support of the staff's denial.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, sign of "aye." Pose the same sign. Pass this, four to two, five to two.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next item on your agenda is zoning docket W-3417 and 3418. These are two separate requests. 3417 is a proposed site plan amendment for the existing Truliant headquarters, and 3418 is a site directly adjacent to the property. This is a proposed rezoning. 3418 is zoning. 3417 is a site plan amendment. The petitioner is Truliant Federal Credit Union, Bobby Joe Carmichael, and NC DOT. The site is 18.24 acres, located on the north side of Interstate 40, between Haynes Mall Boulevard and Burke Mill Road. And the request is a site plan amendment, as I mentioned, for 17.09 acres for the property's own CPS, that's Corporate Park Office Special Use, and the proposed special use rezoning of a 1.15 acre site from CPOS and RS9 Residential Single Family to CPOS. Legacy's Growth Management Plan, property is located in the southwestern portion of Winston-Salem, again, on the north side of Interstate 40, just to the east of the Haynes Mall Activity Center shown there with the yellow star. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there, highlighted in yellow. This is the primary, the larger site, 17 acres, showing the existing Truliant Federal Credit Union headquarters there. You have Interstate 40 directly to the south. Over to the west, you have Haynes Mall Boulevard with general business zoning on the other side for Haynes Mall. Truliant Way, which is the access right now to the site, owned to Haynes Mall Boulevard, a signalized access. Some IP zoning to the north where Bolton Park is, and directly to the north, you have various densities of multifamily where the Westminster Place Neighborhood and the Charlestown Neighborhood are located. Those are townhouse developments there. Further over to the east, you have Burke Mill Road, some single-family homes. Further to the northeast of the subject property there, in the Stonewood Neighborhood, again, across Burke Mill Road. Across Interstate 40, you have some institutional zoning where Hospice is located. Basically the same image, but showing the other site. This is the site proposed for rezoning, the 1.15 acre site. There's a single-family home located on the property now, and that would be removed for the proposed improvements. And green bounding around that is our 500-foot mailing notification radius. Aerial photograph showing the subject property, the development pattern. And these images are taken on site. This is internal to the site, looking at the headquarters. This is out at the intersection of Truliant Way and intersection of Haynes Mall Boulevard. And on the other side of the site, the eastern side of the site on Burke Mill Road, this is looking into the subject property. That home and the trees in the background would be removed for the proposed improvements. This is now looking north on Burke Mill Road. The site is to the left. In the background, you have the Westminster Place and the Charlestown Neighborhood access points in the background there on Burke Mill Road. Internal to the Charlestown Neighborhood, the subject property is behind these trees in the background. And one more, this is the Westminster Place Neighborhood on St. Mark's Road. The site is to the left. This is a southwest suburban area plan, which was adopted in 2015, so it gives guidance for development and redevelopment in the general area. Just quickly going through the colors, you can see there the subject property in the center is recommended for office development. That's pink. The browns are various densities of multifamily. Yellow would be single-family residential. Of course, green for the park, Bolton Park. Red for commercial, and the purple would be for a mixture of uses there. Same image basically, again, for the proposed rezoning, that'd be 3418. Again, office is recommended for the subject property. Looking at the site plan, these are the proposed improvements along with the existing development there. So going from upper-left to right, you have Haynes Mall Boulevard there at the intersection of Truliant Way. That's the primary access into the site, the only access into the site at this point. You have, and shown in blue, this is a proposed three-level parking deck, 193 parking spaces, and you have surface parking in between there, and then the beige, the darker beige building, that's the current headquarters, 122,000 square foot three-level office building. Directly adjacent to that, approved in 2003, but not built, is another three-story addition there of 38,000 square feet. Moving further over to the right, you have the main portion of this request, which is 38, excuse me, that's 83,750 square foot addition, or new separate freestanding building. Again, that's a three-story building, and the associated parking along that. I want to go over some landscaping just briefly. The petitioner has worked with staff, as well as the two adjacent neighborhoods that are most affected. So that longer green line there that kind of is the border, their northern border, the petitioners have agreed to provide actually the most dense planting buffer that we have, which is a 20-foot type 3 buffer yard. That has the most amount of evergreens and supplemental plants that are required in the buffer yards, since we did away with a type 4, the 20-foot type 3 is the most densely planted buffer yard. They've also agreed to add another 20 feet onto that, which would be an off-site easement from the Charlestown Neighborhood where they would maintain the existing vegetation that's now in that area. Also off-site there, that area just to the left of the Burke Mill Road designation, that would be an easement that's recorded and giving Truliant the opportunity to plant a double row of staggered evergreen plantings that have to be at least eight feet tall installation to mature in and screen their neighborhood a little bit more from Burke Mill Road. And then the last segment of green there is, that's their enhanced street yard. So the ordinance requires a 10-foot planting area whenever you have a parking lot in between the building and the street right of way. They have agreed to beef that up to a 35-foot wide planting area, three and a half times the minimum width, and put that on top of a four-foot tall berm. And they've also agreed to put, again, that same planting schedule as a 20-foot type 3 buffer yard on there with the minimum eight-foot tall installation evergreen, so pretty densely planted street yard there. The red is the area of shown of the rezoning, that little smaller notch, again, that just kind of distinguishes that. So one other big part of the request is that they are proposing an employee-only gated access on to Burke Mill Road. So that brings us to the transportation portion of the presentation, and for transportation and circulation, I will turn it over to Mr. Jeff Fanzler with City Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Gary said, Jeff Fanzler, representing Winston-Salem DOT, located here in that building at 100 East First Street. So if you'll allow me to kind of give an overview of what we have going on on Burke Mill Road, then I'll make it specific to this site in question today. So earlier this year, the city of Winston-Salem, I was at the city council, did award $150,000 to study Burke Mill Road, and so what we did, we set a limit for that from basically Stratford over to Forsyth Tech on Bolton, Bolton Park, and over towards basically the entire limit of Burke Mill Road. And after we commissioned that study with Davenport, we found out about this site in question today, I mean, in front of you today, and we wanted to, we didn't feel right as staff to produce a document that wouldn't take into consideration a development of this nature. So the city changed order to our existing contract to make sure that we don't miss anything, and capture what we need to capture to make sure that when we produce a document, we accurately, we haven't missed the 80,000 square foot addition. So in looking at that, we asked that we accelerate that study and look at this particular segment of Burke Mill Road, to make sure we capture what this site will generate and how it will affect Burke Mill Road in this segment. And so in doing that, I'll kind of transition into this site specific. So as Gary mentioned, they are proposing one access onto Burke Mill Road. I want to call your attention to that Burke Mill Road is a high volume, approximately 14,000 vehicles per day. This site is expected to generate with this addition about 158 trips, okay? Now, please let me note that not all of those trips are expected to take that new site. I want to make mention that 158 and 14,000 is approximately 1%, and so we're not talking about a lot of traffic, but it also should be noted that not all of those will take that, because Truliant Way and its connectivity to Haynes Mall Boulevard has direct connection to Interstate 40, Stratford Road, Silas Creek, and some major carriers, and so it is expected after review, and I agree, that the TIA does tell us that approximately 75% will continue to use that Truliant access. So a majority of the site traffic, even upon full build-out, will continue to use that just simply because of where the major carriers are, i.e. Business 40 and Stratford Road. So I wanted to make that clear. And furthermore, in looking at this study, we had identified some improvements that would be required based on allowing the site access there. If you'll allow me, I'll go through those improvements. So the improvement should include a southbound right turn lane with 100 foot of storage, okay, and a northbound left turn lane with 100 foot of storage. And that is accompanied by a traffic signal that would be warranted if that site does develop in this nature and an access provided there across from Stonewood. Stonewood in itself does not warrant a traffic signal. Currently, the level of service in that area right there at Stonewood is a C. With that proposed access, it would take it to an F, so it would be a failing intersection, and the traffic signal improvement would make both legs of the intersection, Stonewood and the gated employee-only access, would take it to an A, much improving the overall congestion in that particular delay. Yes, sir.
The signalization...
The signalization would improve it to an A, okay? And that's just providing direct access out of the site, of the adjacent sides of the street there. Yeah, and I'll get to that. And then, one thing I want to call your attention to, and we asked that we consider this pretty carefully, if you'll allow me to point your direction to where the card readers are interior to the site. One of the concerns we had, since this is an office use, it's an AM and PM peak traffic scenario. You're coming to work and you're leaving work, since, as mentioned, it would be an employee-only access. What we really wanted to nail down was that we do not cause any issues stacking on the Burke Mill Road. We feel like we can, the introduction of a traffic signal would help them get in, but we didn't want them stopping at a card reader, and then it negates the warrant of a signal. So one thing we asked that we really consider is where we place the card reader and how we meter those folks in and out. So what we did, and if you'll look closely, we actually double stacked interior to the site, approximately 200 feet into the site. And so if you do some quick math, you know, the site is expected to take about 138 exiting vehicles, and you can say in the AM peak, it's actually only about 115 will be entering the site in the AM peak one hour. And some simple math, at 20-foot a car, and times two because we're double stacked, there's more than adequate room off of Burke Mill Road, and then you're accompanied by the dual southbound right turn lane, I'm sorry, the southbound right turn lane and the northbound left turn lane. So the impeding of Burke Mill Road traffic will be limited. Now, one thing we also want to do is make sure that we look at the progression of Burke Mill Road. And so in my report, you'll see the mention of a platooning effect, and the platooning effect is critical for Burke Mill Road because of some of the cul-de-sac streets we've created along Burke Mill Road that have sometimes delayed getting out. They have an acceptable gap to be able to find that, to make that left turnout, and sometimes that's difficult, especially in rush hour. You're coming to work and you're leaving work, since it's, as mentioned, it would be an employee-only access. What we really wanted to nail down was that we do not cause any issues stacking on the Burke Mill Road. We feel like we can, the introduction of a, introduction of a traffic signal would help them get in, but we didn't want them stopping at a card reader, and then it negates the warrant of a signal. So one thing we asked that we really consider is the, where we place the card reader and how we meter those folks in and out. So what we did, and if you'll look closely, we actually double stacked interior to the site, approximately two hundred feet into the site. And so if you do some quick math, you know, the site is expected to take about a hundred and thirty-eight exiting vehicles, and you could say in the AM peak, it's actually about a hundred and fifteen will be entering the site in the AM peak one hour. And some simple math, at twenty-foot a car and times two because we're double stacked, there's more than adequate room off of Burke Mill Road. And then you're accompanied by the dual southbound right turn lane, I'm sorry, the southbound right turn lane and the northbound left turn lane. So the impeding of Burke Mill Road traffic will be limited. Now, one thing we also want to do is make sure that we look at the progression of Burke Mill Road. And so in my report, you'll see the mention of a platooning effect. And the platooning effect is critical for Burke Mill Road because of some of the cul-de-sac streets we've created along Burke Mill Road that have sometimes delayed getting out. They have an acceptable gap to be able to find that, to make that left turnout. And sometimes that's difficult, especially in rush hour. The introduction of a signal here, when we stop that signal all red, and even when you face it where you're jumping from a main phase to a side street, when you have an all-red condition, it will provide that gap downstream, both north and south, for those folks in queue at adjacent side streets along the corridor to have a gap that they don't currently have because there is no signal there. So that is a, that is a big deal from the overall progression. Yes, it will stop Burke Mill Road traffic, but it will provide a safe turning movement because there's now an acceptable gap that wasn't currently there. And that's what a traffic signal would do with that particular location. Finally, Gary, did I just hit the tab over here?
Yes.
I want to call your attention to these, and plus, I have two images here I want to call your attention to. Okay? This one currently shows how you would have to get coming from the south. And let me be clear, London Lane is a direct connection to the south here, but the study does tell us that only five percent of this site will actually use, our trip distribution in the study tells us that only five percent of the site traffic will actually use London Lane. But this is just a map representation of where folks would use coming from that, from that area. So currently, you would have to go at all of these other already congested, experiencing delay intersections to get into Truliant Way via Haynes Mall Boulevard. You would have to come, go all the way around, choose your path to get into Truliant Way. And the secondary access provides a relief valve, if I can get it to go, there it goes. You see that goes away. We're taking traffic away from all of these other intersections and providing a direct route, employee-only, to take those, to take, even if we're taking one car off of an already failing intersection, we're doing our job. Now, Burke Mill Road is a three-lane facility for most part. It has capacity in certain areas. However, some of the intersections may not, and this solves that problem because we're taking traffic from those intersections and providing their destination without having to go through countless other intersections to get back to where they want to go. So with that, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions. I will be here to answer any follow-up questions you may have. Is there any questions that I may answer before I take a step back?
You mentioned the card reader is a hundred and fifteen in the AM. Did you, PM is about?
Hundred and thirty-eight exiting, exiting. It's minimal entering in the PM.
But they won't, they won't have to meter out, correct?
So essentially, it would stack up internal to Truliant?
Right.
That's the key is the AM is you, you don't want the stacking backing up into Burke Mill, and that's why what Jeff was explaining, to have that double row of two-hundred-foot storage really helps to eliminate that possibility that we're trying to alleviate.
Mr. Fanzler, you mentioned at the beginning that this would generate a hundred and fifty-eight trips. Are you referring to just peak hour trips? You're not talking about total trips?
That's correct, in a PM peak hour.
Okay. Can you give, because normally when we get zoning cases, we get a total trip generation number. Do you have that for this development?
For the?
For the, well, I'd like to know because here's, here's my concern. We're looking at adding a new access point, so we don't know how many, you have estimate of twenty-five percent of the total site traffic will use that access point, but we don't know what that total number, but it's twenty-five percent of what? You know, what's the total site traffic? That's what I'm trying to get to.
I think upon build-out, it'll probably be around nine hundred employees.
No, I'm talking about trips per day.
Per day?
Yeah.
It's about nine hundred.
Nine hundred trips per day?
Per day.
From the total site?
From the total site, and that was distributed amongst the two access points that are.
Okay, and so it.
Twenty-five percent.
According to your twenty-five percent estimate, then that would be, was twenty-five percent of nine hundred?
Two hundred and fifty, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
But that's not in the peak hour.
Right. You're talking about total trips that you'd be adding onto Burke Mill Road?
Total trips onto Burke Mill Road, right.
Not more than about two fifty?
Yeah.
That's correct, and the level of service D is what, fifteen thousand, eight hundred?
That's correct.
Is what our level of service D, that's kind of the capacity that's left in there.
Two hundred and fifty is two percent. It's two percent increase on Burke Mill.
Right, essentially.
I'm just a little confused because isn't there normally a formula that you use based on square footage to determine trip count?
We do when we don't have a TIA. So I mean, we would obviously defer to a traffic impact study. We use a very rudimentary formula when we calculate those based off the ITE manual. So we would defer to a much more refined sort of point of view that the transportation engineers, that's why we didn't have that in here, is anytime we have a TIS, we always defer to that.
All right, so that number then is based on number of employees primarily?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
And I have the updated number for you. I just, he found the page for me. Thank you. Eight hundred and ninety-three is the total trip generation, and that's based on the formula you mentioned, and that's how we would come up with that, with splitting between twenty-four-hour day, but if you're thinking about the AM and PM peak, one hundred and fifty-eight in the PM and about a hundred and thirty-eight in the AM.
Any more questions for Jeff?
Mr. Fanzler, when you define a gated entrance, I'm already hearing that it's not, it allows traffic to go out without single-car passage. Is that definition of a gated entrance, is that very clear for the future, that it's per car? In other words, that there's no chance that in the future, that gate will be open for a period of time even though it's there? I mean, how do you define that in such precise language that that carries over into the future, no matter who the owner of that land is?
That may be a condition question that.
Yeah, so we've got a condition that's been volunteered that says the new entrance onto Burke Mill Road opposite Stonewood shall be an employee-only gated access other than a temporary construction access and shall not permit a public access between Burke Mill Road and Haynes Mall Boulevard. So regardless of who, if this property were to change hands, that condition would still stick with the zoning of the property.
Well, to me, and I don't know the specific terminology that you use for that kind of a gate, that, I mean gated is a gate, and some owners could say, well, I'm going to open the gate during, you know, the early morning hours to allow employees in. It doesn't necessarily relate to one employee per car or, I think they have a similar rising gate on the, on the parking lot coming from the other direction now. Is there language that is that specific?
We haven't gone there, and perhaps the applicant can address that when they, when they come up to kind of get their presentation and if there's anything they want to offer. But I think what we would, what we would lean on is employee-only. So I mean, there's got to be some way of determining who's an employee, and generally, that's with a card. I mean, that's why we've always seen gates kind of work on other, on other zoning cases. So that's what we would lean on.
Well, just from a practical standpoint, using Georgia's scenario where the employer says, I'm going to open the gate from seven to eight o'clock, wouldn't that actually?
It's even better for traffic flow.
Because people aren't having to stop and card in, they just drive in. I mean, I'm just trying to think from a practical standpoint whether that, whether your scenario would actually make things better rather than worse. I'm not suggesting we make them do that. I'm just saying, if that's our worst case, it actually would maybe be better than.
Well, except on the other side, you could pass through. I would certainly use it to cut over to Haynes Mall if that was the case, though. I would be very careful about that. That's why I think you have to be very careful about the language that you use when talking about this. And it may be, it may be solved by just saying, it has to be some way that you identify the employee. I don't know.
And if I may, one of, you know, the, we have parking equipment on several locations around the city. Typically, treatments of this nature that would be used in this application have sensors on both the front side and the backside. The sensor on the front side being some type of card reader, numbered pad access, and some type of detection on the backside, so it detects when the vehicle actually leaves, and then it drops the arm back. So it's metered on the front side and the backside to actuate that arm, and most of, you can get equipment that does that pretty efficiently.
Yep.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
And Gary will go ahead and finish up staff's presentation, and then we'll move the public here.
All right, in summary, the requests of both, the combined totality of the requests is an expansion of the existing Truliant corporate headquarters, including the previously approved thirty-eight thousand square foot addition, one hundred and ninety space, one hundred and ninety-three space parking deck, a new three-story eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot building on the eastern end of the site, and an employee-only gated access to Burke Mill Road. In analysis, the request is consistent with the office land use recommendation of the Southwest Suburban Area Plan. That area plan also recommends, though, that there be no inappropriate commercial or institutional encroachment in the residential neighborhood. So in order to address that aspect of the area plan, they have included additional on and off-site landscape screening, as I went over earlier. In transportation analysis, just to review what Mr. Fanzler mentioned, the request would increase traffic both on Haynes Mall Boulevard and Burke Mill Road. However, the installation of the traffic signal on Burke Mill Road at gated employee-access-only at the Stonewood Drive intersection, along with the construction of a southbound right turn lane on Burke Mill Road into the site, and the striping of the center lane on Burke Mill Road to create a northbound turn lane, will accommodate the proposed increase in traffic. These are the proposed conditions above and beyond what the normal ordinance requirements are. I apologize, they're very small and hard to read there, but basically I've gone over those in regard to additional landscaping. The driveway permit components are the striping, the traffic signal, other requirements that, the final one that Mr. King mentioned is that the main entrance onto Burke Mill Road, or the new entrance onto Burke Mill Road opposite Stonewall Drive shall be an employee-only gated access other than a temporary construction access and shall not permit a public access between Burke Mill Road and Haynes Mall Boulevard. So staff recommendation, again, this is a two-component request that will necessitate two separate votes. Thirty-four seventeen, the proposed site plan amendment, staff recommends approval. And the proposed rezoning, thirty-four eighteen, staff also recommends approval, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any question for Mr. Roberts?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Of course. So I'm going to declare the public hearing open. I did speak with some of the planning board members ahead of time, as opposed to the normal twelve minutes. I would like for them to have eighteen minutes. Does anyone have an issue with that? All right, so each side, not at the moment, sir, I'm opening the public hearing right now. So we're going to open the public hearing. We do have speaking as proponents, and again, eighteen minutes total. We have Todd Hall, Doug Stemel, Gene Thomas, Tom Bailey, and Frank Aminya, if I'm saying that properly. So again, eighteen minutes total, so please be aware of your time. So Ms. Hall, if you can come up and, again, your name, your address, and your zip code for the record, please.
Certainly. Good afternoon, Chairman, fellow board members. My name's Todd Hall. I'm the president of Truliant Corporate Credit Union, thirty-two hundred Truliant Way, Winston-Salem, two-seven-one-zero, Row three.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and your consideration of our rezoning proposal that was just covered. The rationale behind that is just growth for us. The credit union would like to be able to develop some long-term plans about how we will handle future growth. We moved into this facility in two thousand and five, and we've doubled in assets since that time. We're up to two and a half billion dollars in assets, two hundred and forty-eight thousand members that we serve, and some seven hundred employees, of which four hundred and thirty-five reside here at this location. I don't want to regurgitate all that we've just heard, but our hopes are, is with this approval, that we would be able to phase in first the addition to the property that's already approved, and then the second building that we have in there, resulting in roughly eight hundred and ninety to nine hundred employees, you're well aware of. One thing I would point out, we do believe that, as shown, that this proposal benefits some of the traffic issues that's going on, because we do have employees now that live in the south and southwest wards that are driving and taking the full route that was shown to Truliant Way to get into the existing entrance. And we think we get them off sooner in the mornings and into the pattern later, thus helping, helping the traffic pattern. We do think that the one, the one interest and exit site that we have presently presents a couple of problems for us, and the fact that, you know, from an emergency perspective, it's a little bit limiting, as well as a traffic management perspective. Couple of things that we, we hope that would be beneficial in this consideration is that we do have strong written support from several of our neighbors, Charlestown, who we'll hear from, Ms. Thomas, and then Stonewood. And we've received letters of support from Mark Owens in the chamber and Bob Leek over at WISB. In closing, I'd just like to point out that Truliant is a very important partner in the Forsyth County. We work with some seventy nonprofit organizations in various ways throughout the county. We are a low-income designated credit union, which means that sixty percent of our four hundred, two hundred and forty-eight thousand members make eighty percent or less of the median income of the community in which they reside. So we are, we serve the blue collar of our communities, of the high majority of which reside in central North Carolina. We've been a good corporate neighbor. We believe that we have lived up the promises made when we first came to this location, have honored and gone exceeded our maintenance of the properties with regards to our campus and the visual beauty of that. We did not seek incentives when we created this site and for these four hundred and thirty-five employees in which we now employ, and nor are we asking for incentives related to the potential four hundred and fifty more that we would, we would add to this site. So I thank you so much for your consideration. I'll take no more of your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hall?
Yes, if I may. And in full disclosure, I am a good-standing Truliant member and have been for a number of years, but have no influence on their development whatsoever, nor profit from that. But Mr. Hall, I certainly have been around long enough to be part of the original negotiations with neighborhoods when Truliant moved into that location, and the compromises that were made in the community to give access through Bolton Park to Truliant. In looking at that, my experience with Truliant is that the traffic is actually decreasing into Truliant through that entrance because of your commitment to online banking. Have you found that to be true?
So the online banking piece wouldn't impact my employee fleet?
Right, not at all.
So, you know, it's not impacted that. For our organization, one thing that we've experienced across thirty-three locations, most of which are in central North Carolina, a couple in southwest Virginia, and one in South Carolina, is our transaction volume continues to grow. So I would say that our transaction volume, and I could find that information for you just to validate that, at Truliant Way, the branch there itself has been consistent. I don't know that it's on a significant rise, one to two percent on an annual basis. Organizationally, we're growing at five percent right now, you know, probably an outcome of just other financial institutions choosing to leave some of the markets that we support. And, you know, we're a little bit more on the smaller, smaller end of things than some of the big banks, but we have not experienced that. So I couldn't, I wouldn't want to speak to say, no, our volume is up or down or anything. But regarding transactions, since we just presented to the board recently some evidence around that, that I would say that it's probably consistently been the same for the last several years.
Yeah, and I'm more interested in the traffic than I am total transactions. Now, back when the agreement was originally happened with this zoning for the location, you originally came in asking for rezoning of this property at that time. Do you know why that was withdrawn back then?
I do not.
Okay.
I apologize. Seven years with Truliant and I.
Oh, you're just short-term. Much longer than you.
So one thing, if I could clarify on the transaction piece, I apologize that I refer to that, but in that branch for a transaction, a member has to be on-site.
Okay.
So they would have to drive in to do something. So that was my reference.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Hall? All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Stemel?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to see you. Doug Stemel, six-oh-one North Trade Street, Suite two-hundred, Winston-Salem. I am a landscape architect.
Sorry, zip code?
Two-seven-one-oh-one.
Thank you.
I'm a landscape architect. I know I've been referred to as an architect, but I am a landscape architect, land planner, working on behalf of Truliant. If I could, in a nutshell, sort of explain what's going on, if I can get this mouse pointed in the right direction. There we go. So this one acre on this side right here, Truliant wants to grow. Their existing campus is seventeen acres.
Excuse me, it's not showing.
We're not seeing it.
It's slower.
It's slower. We had to use a backup laptop. The settings, I don't know exactly what... So, you may need to be able to describe it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't do that the whole time. The one acre is adjacent to Burke Mill Road, to the bottom right-hand corner there. So, True Lion would like to grow. They want to expand on that one acre, which is known as the Carmichael Track, where the existing house is. What they're asking for, you'll notice there are no buildings proposed on that land. The houses to come down. We're using that land really as a buffer, a significant buffer, 35 feet wide, extensive planting, at the request of the neighborhood across from us and everybody else that uses Burke Mill Road, so that you do not see the site or the buildings. We're approximately 260 feet off the road at that location. So, all True Lion is asking for is to expand one acre, do an employee gated-only access drive, and put landscaping and a few parking spaces on it to put it in perspective. I know Gary talked about the area plan, but you see the pink area there. In 2015, this board approved the area plan for this to be CPO, so that non-residential development did not continue to go down Burke Mill Road. This area was approved unanimously by this planning board, as well as the city council for corporate park office at this location. Neighborhood outreach, all of you know that we've been around for a long time doing this. We believe in extensive outreach into the community. So far, we've held seven neighborhood meetings. I want to highlight a couple of those. One is our first meeting on May 30. We invited 304 property owners, and we had only 13 attend. So, we tried to reach out and sent notices to do that. Another one that I wanted to mention is the July 24 meeting that Councilmember Dan Bessie arranged, and he invited everybody from Ardmore, homeowners' associations, all the way to Burke Road, Stratford Road, et cetera. So, it was a rather extensive reach. At that meeting, there were approximately 50 attendees that attended, even with that outreach. As a result of all of this, we've worked hard to get the folks that are most affected by this request. That's Charlestown and Stonewood. Charlestown is immediately adjacent to us. They support us. You have that letter in your docket. Stonewood, immediately across from us, that neighborhood and Sanderssted will benefit from a traffic signal at that location that this project allows that to happen. Otherwise, it would not be warranted as a signal to allow people to get in and out of this development. What we found in the second neighborhood meeting is the majority of the opposition is resolved London Lane and British Woods. And we're sympathetic to their traffic lights that's been going on for 20 or 30 years, that there's been a challenge there. And I think transportation can mention some of the improvements going on in 2019 that the city is going to do to help alleviate some of that, and I'll let Jeff Vansler speak for that. These were the 304 map of the outreach and the 13 that attended. All those names and addresses were people that we invited. I want to point out that a lot of negotiation has gone on, discussion. True Lion has listened to the opposition. We've tried, and I'm listing here a number of the volunteer conditions and concessions that I'm going to try to read. Wow. Okay. And I'll hit the highlights. Number one, we agreed to a public access allowed to Burke Mill Road, private gated employee entrance only. We wanted to start with a regular entrance. We backed off and went with employee only. We agreed to no retail customers allowed through the private gated entrance. Number three, we agreed to support the traffic signal at Stonewood and True Lion. If the employee entrance is approved, the signal will improve level of service on Stonewood from an F to an A. We applied for a signal permit within 12 months because Stonewood wanted us to hurry up and get the traffic signal installed as quickly as possible. We're adding pedestrian crosswalks that were requested by Stonewood that we would like to do to allow people to get to Bolton Park. Number four, we agreed to a zoning condition that a future public access shall not be allowed to connect from Haynes Mall to Burke Mill Road. That was an important thing. People were afraid about the cut through. That's in the zoning conditions. We agreed to additional type-three buffer yard, the 35-foot I've already talked about, with a four-foot berm and eight-foot evergreens at time of planting. Number six, we agreed to shift the future True Lion office buildings 260 feet from Burke Mill Road. It's 260 feet off the road. All the vertical buildings and structures are on their current property, other than parking, the buffer, and the entrance. Agreed to additional 40-foot buffer yard with Charlestown and a type-three buffer yard to be a good neighbor to them. We spent a lot of time making sure they were happy with that. We agreed to additional buffering, fronting Charlestown with the turn lane coming in. We wanted to make sure that from their entrance all the way down to our entrance, they would have a good double-staggered row of evergreens that helped buffer traffic, et cetera. We had one request to install a new private gated employee entrance at the time that the building expansion, which has already been approved, the 38,000 square foot building. So, one of the neighbors requested that. We tied up that, but that's somewhat negotiable at that point. What I want to do is really summarize this, because I know Jeanne Thomas from Charlestown would like to speak. But we worked very hard to point out that the planning staff recommends approval of this request. The area plan calls for this. We're following that, and I know that's something that planning board doesn't take lightly. On traffic, the key thing is True Lion employees are already on this road. They travel the road every day. They're going to have to get to and from work, with or without an entrance. So, that traffic is going to be on Burke Mill Road. The traffic study shows that intersections were performed better if you hurry up and get the traffic off of Burke Mill Road from these employees that are already on Burke Mill Road. That total build-out traffic study also says, at peak time, when all of this is built, 10 years down the road or so, that we're only adding 1% to the overall traffic on Burke Mill Road. Important thing about Stonewood, I already mentioned that it's going from, I believe the report said, an F to a level A, so that all these people can get in and out of the development. And that's my summary, and I would like to give Jeanne a chance to speak.
One second, Mr. Stimmel. Any questions for Mr. Stimmel before he takes his seat? All right.
I'm Jeanne Thomas, 117 Charlestown Circle, 27103. And I'm the president of the Charlestown Homeowners Association, and I represent 69 homeowners. And I'm sure you've all received our letter of support. True Lion has been a very good neighbor since 2004, when they first started building. They came, attended our homeowners' meeting, and kept us informed. True Lion's added building and their 40-foot berms and landscaping will provide an improved noise buffer to Interstate 40. It's bad. And True Lion's going to provide the following. With working with the city and getting us a traffic light out there, it's going to slow the traffic down on Burke Mill. And probably, with the slower traffic, you're going to be able to make a left-hand turn on a blind curve out of Hospice Lane. You all need to think about that, too. True Lion is going to provide Charlestown with a new landscape buffer from our entrance to the new True Lion entrance. Because of the right-hand turn lane and relocation of power line, we're going to lose mature trees, our fence, and our cedar row hedge. So, they're, you know, they're making up for our losses. And a wider-than-required landscape buffer of 40 feet along our mutual property line will, you know, will reduce line and guarantee our privacy. And we not... We can't forget in all of this that True Lion provides a real benefit to our city in the form of jobs and community giving. They touch everyone in our community. While not a certainty, True Lion could move to a new facility in Winston-Salem or elsewhere. And then the question becomes, what will happen to the Carmichael property? It will become another hot potato issue, where we might not have no leverage with the neighbor, with the new owner that we wouldn't know. When you factor in the prior approved city plans that show the one-acre parcel becoming special-use commercial, we, as the Charlestown Board, felt it was best to support True Lion's plan. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, Board, there's about 3 minutes and 45 seconds left.
All right, and we have two left to speak.
Mr. Leek, can I ask a quick question of the True Lion folks before we move on?
Sure, to Mr. Hall, or...
Mr. Hall's fine. Am I understanding correctly that you currently have approximately 450 folks on your campus now? Is that...
435. Yes, 435.
And projected, with this expansion, you could handle up to around 900? So, would those be new jobs that are created, or would those be folks that are relocated from somewhere else?
Be new jobs.
Okay.
Yeah, we... Anything outside of this campus for us is our branch facilities.
Okay.
And so, we don't have any other staff support scenarios anywhere else. So, they'd be new jobs.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bailey?
My name is Tom Bailey, 124 Charlestown Circle, 27103. And primarily, I would like to reiterate what Jeanne has just said. We are the community most directly affected by this rezoning. And the history of True Lion in Charlestown has been very positive. When they first moved, they planted Leland Cypress near the back of our property, near the pool. They can't see us, we cannot see them. And when the first meeting started, we were not so much in favor of it, but we talked among ourselves, we talked with True Lion representatives, and we listened to what they had to say. And being a good neighbor, we also would like to say that, obviously, True Lion is poised to grow, as Mr. Hall said. We would like for them to grow beside of us. If we have a... If Charlestown had a choice of neighbors, we would first choose True Lion. It's a financial institution. They work during the day, they're closed in the evening, and closed in the weekend. That will lessen the traffic there. And we hope that they are able to grow in this location in Winston-Salem where they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless Frank... All right. Okay. So, we have a couple of minutes left. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this request?
All right. Moving on to opposition, we do have eight people signed up to speak. Again, keep in mind that we're giving a total of 18 minutes, so I'm going to call Barbara Page, and then Kelly Hensley, and then I think it's Jerry Beefus. So, Barbara Page.
Barbara Page. 2670 Weymouth Road, Winston-Salem, 27103. I wasn't really prepared to go first, and I wasn't really sure I was prepared to go at all, but I just wanted to make my voice heard. I get a little nervous speaking out, but I am not right there at the entrance, but I am further down in Off Amesbury. So, we already have a lot of traffic. I would say we have way too much, especially since Academy Sports came in. And I just think that doubling employees, we're going to see a lot of people take advantage of that back way, which I understand, but... Sorry. We already have Haynes Mall Boulevard that's just way too busy. Burke Mill's the only respite from some of that traffic, and it's already very hard to turn left or right, but especially left, especially at the peak hours, which is just when this is going to impact. So, I wasn't as sure, hearing some of this, if we're voting against rezoning in general, which would then allow True Lion, or specifically True Lion. So, personally, I guess I don't... I'm not for rezoning. I'm not for throwing a lot more traffic on that road that just can't handle it. And we have intersections right now that are just backed up with no free-left turns. You're coming off Bolton Street, you're coming off Silas Creek Parkway, and it's already extremely difficult. Now, let somebody else speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Hensley?
My name is Kelly Hensley. I live at 2728 Charwood Drive, 27103, in Sanderssted Development. This development and area is very dear and near to my heart. My grandparents bought their home there, where I live now, back in the early '60s, and I grew up there as a child. And I have gone to Bolton Park since I was eight weeks old, going to the pool with my mom. And I know it used to not... It's not like it used to be, but it is so busy trying to get in and out of our neighborhood. It is very dangerous, and to turn left or right, we just do not need any more traffic on that road. And I just don't want to see it change, and I'm concerned about the traffic light. If it gets backed up, people are going to start cutting down through Sanderssted, I feel like, and cutting down to Stonewood and going in that way, and it's going to cause even more traffic going into our neighborhood, possibly. And I have an eight-year-old granddaughter and a two-and-a-half grandson that I like to walk to the park. And it is getting almost impossible to walk up the street and cross right over to Bolton Park. And there's no crosswalk, there's nothing to help me get across there, and I should not have to get in my vehicle, try and get up there to go to the park. And I'm just totally opposed to it. If they wanted to put their buildings up and go in Haynes Mall Boulevard, that's fine. I don't... I'm not opposed to them building, but we just do not need any more traffic on Burke Mill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley.
Could I ask Ms. Hensley something?
Hensley.
Hensley. Ms. Hensley, you addressed the stoplight, because first part of your remarks, it seemed like the stoplight was going to help that, but then you mentioned that you were afraid the traffic was going to go another way. And I don't know if the staff could show me what she's referring to here as a possible flow?
Sanderssted runs horizontal to Burke Mill. Right behind.
Okay.
The image that's on the screen right now, if you'll notice on the right-hand side of that image, it looks like there is a street. You have some houses in that triangle that front on Burke Mill, and you have some houses that front look like on internal streets. That's Sanderssted there, and it goes and connects to Burke Mill at that triangle across from Bolton Park.
Right up... Okay. I think Gary might pull it up.
Yeah, we're going to show you all probably our...
Okay. Oh, I see. So, you're concerned that people will start...
There's a better image.
Okay. That's Sanderssted right there. Okay. Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's 14 and a half minutes left.
All right.
Jerry Beefus, 2694 Mary Oaks Trail, 27103. And I'm down in Woodland Hills, just a little bit further down the hill. I would speak in opposition to the rezoning, particularly Part II. I don't believe that True Lion is able. I have no quarrel with True Lion. And if it is positive, and it is helpful in a business sense, and I own a business, to continue developing and building and taking on new clients and new employees, all the best. My concern is to the specifics of the traffic on Burke Mill.
My concern is to the specifics of the traffic on Burke Mill. I don't feel that right-hand turn lanes are the answer to our traffic difficulties in the city. This is what was suggested when it was first said that I-40 was going to be redone. And all of the information I sought, how are we going to ameliorate the fact that Business 40 is going to be closed? Well, we're going to add turn lanes. And as you know, I can name two or three cities where, or two or three streets where we added a turn lane. Somehow, a turn lane doesn't take care of all that traffic. I don't believe adding a turn lane is going to change what this is going to do to Burke Mill. I very much appreciate all of the landscaping that will take place, because between October and January, when I sit in my car waiting to proceed 100 yards, all of that, all of that landscaping is going to be beautiful. It's going to be great. Thank you, folks. But I don't think that addresses the point. I think the point here is that we are saying maybe 300, maybe 400, maybe 500 trips a day. I think that's woefully inadequate. That's woefully inadequate. I go up and down Burke Mill four, five, six times a day. I believe, even if it's only another 450, 500 employees. And I guess my greater concern is we are already coming back some seven or eight or nine years, I don't know, sir, you have a far greater history than most of us in this, in this area. But when True Lion first developed there, they didn't get an exit onto Burke Mill. Now we're coming back asking for an exit onto Burke Mill. I don't know where we're going to be a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now. And my other concern is, how are, how is it really policed that it is only employees in and out? Most exit gates that I know don't need a card. Most exit gates, and with all due respects, I confess, I use exit gates all over town that aren't intended for me. So I feel this is the issue. The issue is, where do we go six months from now, 12 months from now, 18 months from now, and we're all gathered here because, oh, wait, we, we made a decision and we didn't look at the unintended consequences? I speak in opposition to the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next would be, last name is Murphy, I'm sorry, I can't make out the first name. Siobhan.
Siobhan. 11 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
David Irwin, 2942 St. Marks Road, 27103. I live in Westminster Place. And first of all, I would like to say thank you to True Lion. You guys have done your homework, and you have done everything you can to try to make this thing work the best it possibly could work. I appreciate that. You came and spoke to our Neighborhood Association meeting in June. I really appreciate what you're doing, and I think you've done your homework, but the problem is, it is the traffic. There are a few things wrong with the, with the, first of all, the math's a little fuzzy. 25% of 900 employees is not 138 people. And you can break them down, 138 here and 120 there, but someone's going to have to go home from work at night, and someone's going to have to come in the morning. It's going to be 200-some people each way, added to the traffic every day at both times. And if you've tried to get, it's not just about Charlestown, it's not just about Stonewood. If you try to get up and down London Lane at 5:00 in the afternoon, right now, in the summer with the kids at school, it's 12 to 15 cars deep. Okay? And yeah, it's a cut-through street, and this is how people want to come and go to avoid the major thoroughfares. The way I look at it, you've got Haynes Mall Boulevard, you've got I-40, you've got Silas Creek Parkway, four lanes here, six lanes here, six lanes there, and a nice little neighborhood back there that's been there for a long time. And people use it as a cut-through street, I do. But it's a symbiotic thing. If you can, if you can keep the neighborhood nice and stable and keep the business district where it has the major thoroughfares that come and go, you've done your job. You've done the right thing. Another thing that bothers me is the rezoning of that one house right there that faces, tearing a house down in the neighborhood. Two rezoned, two business. That starts a precedent. I appreciate that True Lion says, as long as we're here, we're not going to do this or do that, the property will always do. Well, who says True Lion's going to stay there forever? Once the thing changes hands, what else allowed in that zoning classification for that site? Who's to say someone 10 years down the road is not going to say, we've got a part of a restaurant in here, restaurants allowed in there, so, you know, why don't we do that? And then we'll get a bunch of people lean on it, and nobody works that gate anymore. We don't need that, but there's a paved road. These are the things you have to look at further down the road for that site and for the health of the neighborhood. I'm a True Lion member, been there nearly 20 years, and I was there before they put the building in there. And I have to go all the way around the back way and Haynes Mall, to just go to the drive-thru. It's worth it. I mean, you know, gee, it'd be nice to have something off St. Marks Road where I could just drive right down to the drive-thru. It's worth the inconvenience. They're a good bank, they're a good corporate person, a good corporate group to deal with, and I love them. But as far as the safeties to building the neighborhood, you got, okay, school buses, school stops. When school starts back, there's a huge bus stop up there. Kids, my own kid walks to and from every day. I'm taking up other people's time, so I need to sit down and shut up. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Slightly more than eight minutes, 8:15.
Hello, my name's Siobhan Murphy. I reside at 2215 Newcastle Drive, 27103. I do have some pictures to give you folks. These are pictures of London Lane, like the last gentleman just spoke to, of the traffic that comes around. This is just two days ago. These pictures in here are, those are all the same. These are not, these you'll have to share. But these ones are also from before I-40 closed through just a couple of weeks ago. They're at different times of the year. You'll see it's winter, you'll see it's summer, you'll see it's spring in all the different pictures. That is a typical 5:00 time at London Lane. So there's that. Then I'll just kind of read this prepared statement that I have. Traffic on London Lane has rapidly growing problems since it was opened in 1999. Since then, the British Woods neighborhood has seen an increase in noise pollution, litter, traffic volume, road rage, accidents, and a major decrease in pedestrian safety and general livability of the area. The city's leadership planning department and Winston-Salem DOT have done very little over the last 20 years to quell the residents' concerns and surrounding community issues regarding the massive volume increases and the problems that stem from it. While we know that True Lion has not caused the traffic problems on London Lane, and we do, we do agree with other HOAs that True Lion has been a good neighbor over the years. True Lion's growth, prosperity, and employee convenience, which we fully support, should not come at the expense of local residents. Therefore, the British Woods Neighborhood Association, consisting of 226 homes, does not support the rezon of the residential property of 1718 Burke Mill Road. The property needed to construct the access road for True Lion employees. We do believe this access road will further increase traffic on London Lane, causing more congestion and facilitate greater risk to resident and family safety in British Woods neighborhood. If the Planning Board and City Council approve the rezon of 3418, the city will be allowing the known traffic problem to continue and compound with no actionable solution. Making our neighborhood safer from the growing dangers and increase of daily vehicle traffic should be your primary concern. There's the difference between smart planning for growth and just allowing development. Any part of any rezoning request that purposely permits more vehicles onto Burke Mill Road and by consequence through British Woods residential area should be denied. We ask the Planning Board and City Council members vote against the rezoning case 3418 that allows for the access road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy, the, how will, in your perception, in affecting British Woods and London Lane, will the stoplight make a difference?
The stoplight, I don't know that, but that'll affect anything for, you're talking about the stoplight at Stonewood?
Yeah, the new stoplight proposed.
I don't think, I mean, it might give that, somebody spoke to platooning, I think it's called, that it might give a little more space for the folks to then get to the stoplight at London Lane and Burke Mill, but I don't, I don't necessarily think that that stoplight will do anything for us. I mean, on all, whether the access road is there or not, you see in the pictures that London Lane is, go here, drive through London Lane, this is the way we want you to take. So really, I mean, that, it's a problem, and we shouldn't be then allowing more traffic and more things and, you know, another, I'm offered the 500 jobs, I really am, but another 500 people cutting through there is not something I'm for.
In your discussion with the city and NCDOT, are there any solutions to that backup of traffic on Burke Mill and London teeing in there?
Been speaking with Jeffrey Fancer, I know that by the end of 2019, London Lane and Burke Mill Road will be getting a protected left turn lane for people to come through. But again, that might, I don't know if the, I mean, maybe Jeffrey can speak to this a little bit more. I know there's issues with timing at the light at Ebert, and there's the protected left turn lane that comes through London Lane on Burke Mill. There's also a four-way stop in the middle there, too, which we do want as a neighborhood. We need that as a pedestrian crosswalk. It's the volume. The volume is so backed up, I think no matter what happens with those lights, there's, it's not even an issue of how fast you can get them in or out. They have nowhere to go. It's so many cars, it's such a volume of people. I mean, you can clearly see that picture was two days ago. I mean, that's backed up all the way from Ebert all the way to Burke Mill Road, and they have nowhere to go. So I don't know that a light might get people in there faster, but then where did they go?
And I am aware that our vote to approve Academy Sports and all of that did congest that further.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would note, I know we've talked a lot about traffic. We can have Jeff kind of come up and address some of these issues one by one, or we can kind of save them until the end and kind of go through them, whatever works best for the board, but I know Jeff's probably got some additional information he can share on some of these items.
So we can have a consolidation of that.
I'm sorry, before, here's a copy of that letter, and then I also have a petition with 184 total signatures, and there's some comments also on the end there of people, why they.
That's just the copy of what we already have.
That's a copy, yep. Nope, you can have that, and that's yours to keep.
I think we already have, is this the same one?
Nope. That one's brand new for you.
Thank you. Joel Hayes, and I then, this is Beverly Freeman, and then Dan Hunt.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joel Hayes. I live at 2942 A St. Marks Road, Westminster Place. I've lived there for 25 years, served on the board for 20. We canvassed our association of 111 homeowners. We've got David, I mean, with 67. 67 to the door.
Everyone's unanimous.
Is 100% unanimous against the entrance. And we do border the property and touch the property of True Lion. I'd like to say that True Lion has been a neighbor ever since they came in, but I have heard it came up. I was on the board when this transaction took place for True Lion's campus to be put there. I've heard it from several other people. We went back through our records. We sold property off, off of our property to allow True Lion to build their campus. They would not be able to be where they are today unless we sold that property right away for them to come off Haynes Mall Boulevard for True Lion Way. It was a big issue about that property and the development of it and the whole neighborhood. This includes Westminster, Charlestown, Stonewood, everyone. The concern is, is connecting Haynes Mall Boulevard in any way, shape, or form over into our neighborhood physically. It always has been an issue, so it's a very sore spot. In a nutshell, we've had councils try to help our neighborhood with traffic, but yet the Planning Board continues to allow more Kimmel Park, we have the institutional down for KB Reynolds, we're all four hospice, then Novant went down the power lines from then and added more things. Now we're talking about the fire department that was up and moved from CVS right there, and now we're going to put the fire department back off Burke Mill again. We're going to build it again. That's going to add more. We have several churches, schools, we have children. The traffic, we're back to traffic, folks, and it just keeps coming back, and we keep getting assurances about not adding cars, but yet we keep adding cars by the way we're planning. The word that came up that I think everyone here relates to on this side, and I'm sure you do, at your home, home, the, everything surrounding is homes. You're going to tear down an R8 home to do this out of the neighborhood? Did you see everything that was in those pictures surrounding that home? It's homes. It's not other businesses on the other side of the interstate. But we're going to tear down an RS8, and I'm on the board, and I get asked, how did this one little house right here get in the Planning Board to be torn down in the middle of a neighborhood that has such a traffic issue that everyone has promised they're going to solve for us to add more cars? But we are not a bad neighbor. We don't, we appreciate True Lion and what they've done. We want to be reasonable. Reasonable to us is, is we understand to grow, they only have one entrance, one egress, one entrance. To grow, they're probably going to need more for emergency, anything that comes up, they're going to need another egress. Well, if you could put a hardened gate there, you wouldn't have to put a stop sign, just bring a drive straight up to Burke Mill, put a hardened gate in. We suggested that you can let bike paths go. Your employees can come and walk up there to the sidewalks and come up to the park, walk in our neighborhood, live in our neighborhood, walk to work. That makes sense to us, but people that's transiting, coming into our neighborhood to come to work, well, we heard, well, they're on Burke Mill anyway. Well, they got to be coming up London Lane to be doing that, because otherwise, they'd come down front us on Burke Mill and come down front us to get on Haynes Mall and come on down to True Lion Way. Or they'd get off on Peters Creek Parkway or Silas Creek right there and come on in that way. So thank you very much for your time, and as I said, we were 100% unanimous on our canvas of our neighborhood, and we do touch True Lion property. It was all negative on the entrance as proposed. But as I said, we want to be reasonable also. True Lion has been a good neighbor, and we can say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one minute.
All right. So we have one minute with two speakers left.
I'll be very quick.
All right.
Beverly Freeman, 1940 Stonewood Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Only learning today that our HOA has supposedly sent in a letter of recommendation. We were never informed of this as a homeowner. I came up early this week and passed out packets to all of you respectfully, giving them all the signatures that we have worked for three and a half months tirelessly to get, but obviously, our opinions as homeowners didn't matter to our board. For most every one of us that live in Stonewood, our homes are our single largest asset and will be. I'm 65 years old, I've lived there 24 years. It was my hope to live there until I leave this earth. We're just simply asking that a pause be given until constant traffic is put upon us. Just pause. Really take a long, serious look at how it affects every one of us, not just Stonewood, not just this neighborhood or that. It's the entire corridor. And although the traffic study was rushed up to get it done for the area that affects immediately around what True Lion is asking for, the entire report is not finished to give us a true vision of what we're looking at. Some of these figures don't make sense to us laypeople when you tell us that five years ago, the traffic was the same that it is today, and that was for the section of Burke Mill that they say is done. How is it possible, when I live there every day for those five years, and I know that that traffic is not the same? I'm not going to take any more of your time, but our people that signed, that we submitted are in opposition.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hunt, time is up, but I will give you a minute if you can.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Y'all should have made your request about 10 years ago. Bad timing. A report that I'm going to short circuit. Okay, first of all, a comment was made early on about those people in support, none of the, saying that they were the most effective, and I challenged that, saying you don't have all the information. Brish Woods is 4/10 mile south of this entrance. of this entrance. London Lane is the only road from that entrance to the southeast. That is the only road that anybody who wants to go to the southeast is going to take. The traffic study says this. Just looking at, it was a four-day study over a year ago in May, and you look at points where I've put arrows. At the close of business, if you divide that number by four, at the close of business on London Lane, moving from Burke Mill to Ebert, the average number of vehicles is 98. We were told by True Lion that 300 employees would be given a key. If I may finish quickly, if only a quarter of those come our way, then that would make it 173 cars in an hour at rush time, a 43% increase. Ridiculous. I suggest that the people that were most affected won't have one more car going through their neighborhood like we will. We should have been included in that study that was submitted to you. We are more affected by any of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Chairman, we need his address. We need your address.
Dan Hunt.
I have lived for 45 years at 2181 Newcastle Drive, 27103.
Thank you.
That's the intersection of Newcastle and London.
Thank you very kindly. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I remain confused. I wanted to ask Ms. Freeman a question if I could, if she would come back up, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I must say, I thought I was beginning to lose my mind as I was reading the correspondence I got and then heard Mr. Stimml talk about Stonewood being in support of this and then reading signatures. Now, so what you're saying in the signatures is over 50% of the homeowners?
Over 50% of the homeowners. Do you guys not have the packets that we brought?
Well, that's what, I'm hearing two different things.
It's very unsettling for us to live there as well, sir, because we have a relatively new board. And I, from the very day that I knew anything about this happening, I got interested and I've been to every single meeting that I've ever been told about. And so have a lot of our other people. I also took it upon myself to tirelessly with several other homeowners, we connected with one another, we've talked via phone, emails, you name it. Some of these people can't because of work and other situations in their lives, health reasons, everything else, couldn't attend all these meetings, but they have been fully informed. All of the documentation from True Lion has been given to them. We have not tried to play with any numbers. We've given them all the information. They've all signed against it that we could reach. And then to learn in the last two weeks prior to this meeting, our board called a meeting on True Lion's property. We went to that meeting as well. I did, and Joy did, and only eight other homeowners, all of those mostly board members. And I have not been told by my own board that they were sending in a letter of recommendation. I was told by the president of the British Woods Homeowners Association. And you could have balled me over with a feather when they've watched us work tirelessly. They've known what we were doing. And then to, at the last second, say they are our voice. They're not our voice.
I think you clarified that for me. I was, yeah, I was confused.
Hold on one second.
Regrettably not. The public hearing, we've already seated the 18 minutes for both sides. All right, so I think for clarification, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed first. I think we need to hear from DOT on some of these issues that have been raised, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, planning board. I want to speak to London Lane first. The city, unrelated to Burke Mill, I mean, unrelated to True Lion in any capacity, has three projects that are currently slated this calendar year. One being, we had an accident at Ebert and London Lane where a traffic signal cabinet was hit and was completely replaced, was complaced and not timed correctly. And we've been fighting that issue ever since. We have, I've commissioned my personal staff, once we started getting complaints about that, unrelated to anyone heard from tonight, independent complaints, independent from everyone. We have independently studied that and we are actually working to implement some additional timing plans to help that stacking issue there. Again, completely independent of any issue. Second is London Lane and Newcastle, the intersection area is a four-way stop currently. That's been an area of interest that I've heard throughout my tenure at DOT. And London Lane is scheduled for resurfacing this year. It's on our, it's already approved, contractor's award, and they've scheduled it for this calendar year, so it'll be done this paving season. And we've added to that work a scope to make a raised table there with crosswalks, a raised table just to draw attention at this stop to improve the pedestrian connectivity adjacent across London Lane. And that'll be a major improvement right there at Newcastle. And thirdly is the protected left turn signals at London Lane and Burke Mill. It is a dramatic need, it's needed currently. And I think that will much benefit the area. It eliminates cut-through traffic. I know now London Lane, I mean, Newcastle sees some cut-through traffic because there's no protected left turns at, sorry, there are no protected left turns at Burke Mill. So, cut-through traffic is remedied by good traffic signalization because the major corridor handles more traffic and I can go faster if I signalize it correctly. And that's an area that we have not done and it's slated for, it's under design now. I also want to call your attention to the access and to make sure that we're clear on what the city stance is on some of the background traffic data. So, to be clear on that, sorry, doesn't, the site is expected again to generate close to 900 trips. However, not all those, not all those are expected to use Burke Mill Road.
Jeff, I'll just jump in real quick. For the board's sake, are you guys clear on where those three improvements were that Jeff referenced? Does he need to point those out to you on this map so that you guys are 100% clear?
I can point them out.
Okay.
I'm here, can you see? You guys can't see it. What if I do this?
I'm sorry.
Ever here, that's where we're working to re-time it now. We just, probably, I don't know, three weeks, four weeks ago, we, we had the accident there and we've been struggling with correcting that timing issue ever since. And so that's down here at Ebert, especially in the PM when there's so much of an issue with exiting traffic. Second here is Newcastle, where we have the raised table that is planned. It's already, we've already sent the design down to the contractor to get the estimate, include that with the resurfacing. And you can kind of see the way Newcastle wraps back up and ties into Ludlow, Woodworth, and up here in this area, how that would be a cut-through if I was not signaled, signaledized correctly with protected lefts at London Lane. So, we seek through traffic because there are no left turn, protected left turn signals. And the third project is those left turn signals here at London Lane and Burke Mill there. And that will greatly improve delay, that will greatly improve how much stacking you see, and also limit, but meter left turn traffic a little bit better. And that's three elements of London Lane. Are there any other questions? I know that you've heard a lot and I'm happy to answer those in any capacity that I can.
Fancer, if I can. What is that intersection with Burke Mill and London rated?
Okay. Currently, it's a C.
It's a C?
Yes, sir.
And that's with a signal?
Yes, sir.
There's no signal?
There's no signal.
Okay.
No, there's a signal at London Lane, isn't there? You're talking about left turn.
Yep. Well, no, I'm just talking about that intersection of Burke Mill and London. You're saying that's rated a C?
That's correct.
Even though, so London Lane must be rated much worse then?
Well, we typically rate intersections and the intersections, for example, Ebert in the PM may be rated worse because that's a side street approach to a major carrier in Ebert. So, that approach could be rated worse, absolutely.
Is it rated an F?
Not likely.
Not likely?
No.
Even with these pictures? So, that ain't, that ain't an F?
It may be an F in the peak hour, again, we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
We didn't, we didn't capture that with this nail down. It was kind of outside of our scope.
Oh.
Mr. Fancer, I still have some questions about the exact number of trips we're talking about. For this rezoning, for this 87,000 square foot building, how many trips are associated with that building?
893.
Okay, see, that was the reason I didn't understand. I don't think you answered the question I asked you before. The question I asked you before really was about the total number of trips for the entire 200 and something square foot complex, which is built in three phases. Because what I'm trying to get a handle on is, you know, you have employees who work there now and will some of them be motivated to use that back entrance, those who aren't included in these numbers that you're giving?
They absolutely will. But let me, let me clarify. So, when I say 900, yes, that's the new trips that will be added to existing. However, don't forget that it's a 75-25 split. Those new trips are the total site. Very small, I mean, Interstate 40, that's what we're talking about here. That carrier and Strapper Road is still the major carrier destination to get folks to work. So, yes, while it's more than 900, it's still, the distribution's accurate and my number of 158 exiting trip in the peak hour is total site.
And it takes into account that?
It does. It does, absolutely. And I'm sorry, wasn't clear, but it does capture those exiting trips captured. That's the total site access capturing cut-through traffic from the existing building.
Okay. One other question, it happened to you with the capacity of the road. I think you listed something, I think it's 15,800. Where is that? What segment are you talking about that has that capacity?
Well, let me be clear. The three-lane section, which is a big part of Burke Mill Road, particularly here, actually has close to 20,000, 21,000 capacity. That's a typical three-lane section. When we say Burke Mill Road capacity, that's a tough one because there are sections that aren't three lanes. There are sections that have been improved down towards Academy that have much, much higher capacity. So, particularly this segment will be the 20,000 range.
Okay. And there was a letter that, from Art Moore, that came to us that I don't think we had a representative talking about, but they made a proposal, can you limit the number of trips coming out that gate? Is that anything that has been done before or is there a mechanism to do that?
That's an operational issue. Excuse me. I can't speak to how the site would function from the gate. All that we have looked at is that we, that we were told and looking at it the way it was studied, is that it would be employee access and from my understanding, it would be meter exiting too. So, you wouldn't have any wraparound trying to cut through on the other side. That it would be completely degated. Number associated, percentage associated with it, I can't speak to that. That's more of a True Lion question.
Okay, one other question, sorry. The study that we heard about, when will that be completed?
It's scheduled for end of the year, early next year.
Jeff, the photo that we were presented showing London Lane at 5:15. So, I realize all this traffic is not generated from True Lion. There's a lot coming in.
That was taken yesterday.
Right, there's a lot coming in. I don't even know if there's a way to determine what percentage, but I think the whole, the thing is that there's just a lot coming in.
The study did look at how much traffic from the campus would be using London Lane and it's 5%.
5%?
5% from True Lion campus.
Okay. So, what could alleviate this?
Another road. Another road. But again, our improvements are intended to alleviate some of that. And to be completely transparent, now, there's been issues prior to 40 closing and you've seen evidence and pictures passed around. However, we have seen a percent increase in this area with 40 closure. So, early next year, when we get it back, we do anticipate a reduction. It will not solve the problem and I will be clear on that.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to reiterate, I mean, you know, whenever Jeff said, you know, another road, that is one of the reasons why in the Unified Development Ordinance and when we have cases, we do encourage interconnectivity because again, the more routes you have, the less impact you have on a single route. So, I mean, again, that doesn't address the issue that we have here, but that is one of the reasons why from a planning principle, we always encourage multiple points of ingress and egress and interconnectivity to disperse that traffic as opposed to concentrate in a funnel, which is essentially what this is.
Are there any further questions for staff?
We got 150 or 160 PM. I apologize. All right, now I want to make sure I understand this. So, PM peak.
Right.
We're adding 160.
Sure.
Okay.
Exiting that access.
Okay.
In the peak hour, which is the PM. Yeah, and that's, that's when the site's fully built.
Right, right.
Yeah, which...
As Melinda said, I mean, that's the total site impact, isn't that correct? Or is that not correct?
Yeah, that's the worst that is projected.
Okay.
When it's fully built.
All right.
No, no other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, does anyone, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, again, just to clarify and just make sure we're on the same page.
So, the first motion?
Two actions, 3417 and 3418, and it's obviously, one is a site plan amendment and one's a rezoning and approval of the site plan.
And so we need to do it separately.
The first one we're going to do is 3417, which is the site plan amendment.
I would move that we approve 3417, which is the site plan amendment.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Hicks. All those in favor, sign of aye?
Could I speak?
Yeah, let's, if you may want to talk about.
May I make a comment first?
Sure.
I am concerned about going forward with this without finishing the study. I still do have a lot of concerns about the, not just this development, but the way it relates to other developments on, on the road and the capacity of the road and do, you know, the signaling situation. And I just think, you know, since True Lion has got a longer timeframe to do this operation, I think they're talking about several years, maybe even up to 10 years. I just think if we're spending this much money on a, on a study, it needs to be looked at comprehensively in terms of everything rather than just taking it piecemeal. So, I'm just not comfortable. I know I've asked a lot of questions about traffic and that's, it just reflects the fact that I still have concerns.
So noted, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since I moved approval, I feel compelled to explain why I did so. But before I do, I just want to congratulate everybody here for the level of civility that you guys displayed with one another. It's rare in this day and age to see this many people in a room who disagree with one another be as polite to one another. So, regardless of what side you're on, thank you very much for that. And to the gentleman's comment that we missed some good stuff, I have no doubt that we did.
There's a lot of stuff.
And I have no doubt we missed good stuff on both sides. And I apologize to those of you who were here and don't maybe feel like your voice was heard. We're in a tough position listening to your arguments and we do hear both sides. So, I regret we can't listen to more of it. I moved for approval for three reasons, or actually five reasons. Number one, it's in conformance with our current land use plan. So, when the, when the area plan was adopted several years ago, this particular part of this area was looked at and this board agreed that the type of zoning that we're now voting on was part of the plan for that particular area. So, I think the... So, I think the opposite of something that was said in opposition is true, we're heading down a slippery slope if we start deviating from our, from our area plan, and if you've come to many of these meetings, you'll hear us oftentimes rely on what was included in the area plan, not to say we don't deviate from it sometimes, but in this case, that's what was agreed upon when the area plan was approved. That's the biggest reason why I feel like this is the correct decision to approve it. Second is, my understanding of the traffic counts, the traffic studies, the signalization that's going to occur, is that it's actually going to, the traffic improvements are going to actually improve the level of service in that particular segment of Burke Mill from nearly failing to pretty darn good. Third reason is that it's going to enable one of the largest financial institutions still based in Winston-Salem, or to be based in Winston-Salem, to nearly double their workforce. You can go about a block and a half that way and see a couple gigantic monuments to financial institutions that have bailed out on Winston-Salem. I think Truliant is to be commended. In full disclosure, you guys hold the note on my truck, so I'm not, I'm not saying that because of that.
Maybe you should have left that one out.
Anyway, you know, in a day and age where we see financial institutions leaving Winston-Salem, I think they're to be commended for what they're trying to do here. The other thing I think they're to be commended for is they're trying to continue to develop an existing site, whether that's here in Winston-Salem or somewhere else, rather than bailing out and saying, let's just start over where we can do exactly what we want to do. We've got to do more than that. You're going to hear more and more about infill as we run out of land in this county. They're not making more of it, and so we, we're going to have to accept the fact that there's going to be higher and higher density development, but in this case, you've got a neighbor that's trying to use the property they have instead of, you know, we'd love to have you come out to Kernersville and build a campus, but be commended for doing this. You know, instead of trying to just leave a site that then has to be redeveloped or find a new tenant for it. And again, my last reason is just, as unfortunate as it is in some respects, as we continue to grow, because if we don't grow, we're going to die, we're going to have to become more and more comfortable with higher density environments, and that is, as someone who grew up in this community, that is a foreign concept to us, I recognize that, but it's something we're going to have to get more comfortable with. So, those, those are my reasons for moving for approval, and I apologize for being so long-winded, but I know it's a contentious issue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. So, there is a previous motion and second on the floor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes 5 to 2. And now we'll go to the vote for 3418 for the rezoning of Burke Mill Road.
I'd also move approval for that.
And I presume, excuse me, I presume for the same.
Yeah, I'm not going to make you sit through all that again.
All right, all right.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Hicks. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes 5 to 2. Thank you so much. Again, I will echo Mr. Grubbs. I know it's very contentious when we're, when we're doing this, but I'm sure Truliant will continue to be the community partner that they have been, and I'm sure the conversation with the neighborhood probably is not done. So, as people are exiting the chamber, we will take a moment so they can leave before we continue. Thank you, sir. So, if we could clear in the next 30 seconds, please, thank you. All right, so we're going to continue at this point and go to our staff report.
Very good. Just a few things, just a few things to note. Thank you to Councilmember Cipio for joining us this afternoon, I know Councilmember Larson was in attendance as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you for joining us. I'll turn it to Desmond for a brief preview of our caseload. We have had pre-submitting deadline, our filing deadline is Monday, so we don't have the final tally, but Desmond may have some indicators of what that's looking like.
I don't, really. You know, a pre, somebody meeting the pre-submitting deadline is no guarantee that they're going to meet the final deadline. We did look at four plans, I think, at the pre-submitting deadline. One of those is not looking good, so, you know, there are at least three that will probably come in on Monday for the next cycle, and then we don't have any indication of general or limited use cases.
Thank you. Just a couple notes on some staffing things. Brian Wilson, most of you know Brian Wilson in our department as Rob Solomon, will be retiring from our organization. Brian was promoted to take his position as Planner-View Coordinator. So, Brian's done a really fantastic job along with Gary of holding down our front-end customer service while Rob has been out. So, as Brian has been promoted, that leaves his planner position open, and so we are beginning to interview for that planner position. In addition to, ERK's team has a position open, our Urban Design Planner, and that's somebody we're looking to get in with some design experiences. We continue to get more involved in that. We have completed our interviews, and we hope to have an announcement at some point once those details are finalized, so that's, that's moving along. As far as your work session, just a couple items to note. We will be bringing to you an amendment to a redevelopment area certification, and we also have two items, our annual report and then the final status report. We bringing those to you as well, so it shouldn't be a super-loaded agenda for work session.
Thank you. All right, again, we always remember Mr. King.
Absolutely.
And thoughts and prayers are with the family. Councilmember Cipio, thank you for joining us as well, Mr. Larson.
I have a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.